Program. Does anybody need a break?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, then we'll get going with council meeting at seven oh three. Called them, we don't have to call to order. Sarah.
Here.
John.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Ethan here. Doug and Rick are both excused. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Letter three, the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
A motion to approve, any changes, Greg.
Nope.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, stick my flag and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, number four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Anyone? Anyone? Moving on to five A, budget presentation, history center. Eric, is this you?
After talking with Brandon and as we just went through, we don't really know what the fate is. So Brandon and I discussed that we lowered the repair maintenance down to twenty thousand because again, we don't know what's gonna happen, what you guys are planning. Obviously, there's a lot of options out there. We left the contactive services at five thousand. As I mentioned earlier, we have some repairs that we have to do to try and serve and prevent. What the light paint on the outside is, we're gonna have to re-caulk all the windows on the inside in the apartments. Because even putting plastic over them, it just literally blew the plastic up like a balloon. So we're hoping on the inside. I also mentioned utilities, the utilities are gonna be an increase because, you know, with all that cold air coming in from the outside. And I went through last year alone, just from gas and electric, we paid just under seven thousand dollars to, for gas and electric in that. And I just foresee with this winter, in the condition that the building is in, that the utility bills are gonna be higher. But like I said, we're gonna do some stuff on our end on the inside to try and help combat because when I, I mentioned the radiator, it froze, we're working on that and we can feel the air coming in around the building. So I'm working on getting those windows caulked from the inside, hoping that that'll help. The window that had snow coming into it, with the exception of removing the complete wall, I don't have a repair for that. So that's pumping cold air in to the history center, that's downstairs in the history center. So.
This frozen radiator pipe, is it in the walls or is it within the?
When Barry Alger had the building, he built like a bulkhead. And the way he did it, all the pipes run up the brick. So like, here's the wall, here's the pipe, the insulation was over here. So this was just cold air in here coming through that brick. And.
And any cracks in the outside wall would directly?
Yes.
Contact.
Yes. And so we went down, we cut holes in the wall, put heaters and fans and everything. And after about a day and a half, thankfully no leaks, it broke free. As of right now, we've left those holes in the wall. Because there's no sense in patching them if that exterior wall isn't repaired. It's gonna keep blowing cold air. If we get another, you know, cold blast like that, who knows what could happen? So it's just, so in that, we're asking for five thousand to help with utilities because they're gonna be, you know, expensive with the condition that the building's in. And then the other part of the budget is property tax and that's the city's portion, so.
Is the front apartment still on rent?
Um, we have it ready to go, we waited, we got our certificate of occupancy, we had our inspection. And then the storm hit, we realized all the windows were leaking cold air. So we had to take a step back and we gotta get that fixed. But it is ready to go, we got the inspection off clear on that. But we gotta get in there, caulk the windows and see if that's gonna help. Cause I, I don't wanna rent it out to somebody and it's forty degrees in there.
Well, we need to get that done.
Yeah.
Now, so if we gotta hire it, we gotta hire it. Get the windows caulked and.
Well, that's on the inside, that's our.
Well, whatever, I'm just saying that to not rent out an available apartment for that is, and then to try and figure out how to pay for the building is unacceptable.
Part of it is, if you wanna hire, it costs the outside of the windows because we've never had this problem before. They did the work on the exterior.
And maybe that's what we need to do is get a contractor and look, inspect the outside of the building and look for any openings and cracks. You know, I mean, I, I know we're gonna do top point and brick replacement eventually, but until then, we're gonna get the cracks filled and/or the spaces around the windows taken care of as well.
You're just throwing good money after bad.
Right. So it's, even though it sounds like a Band-Aid, um, that seems like the right thing to do.
Well, if you're caulking the windows into the brick, it's not a Band-Aid, that's the only way it's done, really.
Yeah. And I think that when they pulled the stuff out, they pulled, you know.
A lot of it fell off.
Is there certain areas that you could pinpoint that, or is it just everywhere? Most of what is the original, where they took the paint off the original brick, which would be the main part of the history center and then the two apartments. And I noticed that the front windows, cause I came over and talked to Brandon about it, I was gonna try and put spray foam in there. But the gaps are too small, you have the nozzle and the spray foam, he said, do whatever you can, but I was unable to, so I tried stuffing insulation in there. But it's, to me, it's the, about the mid area, about where the chimney is, the windows on either side of that is where, you know, we're having a problem. And right next to it is where the snow was coming in on the inside. There was a snow drip on the windowsill, so.
Yeah, that needs to be repaired as soon as you can get somebody.
Yeah.
Really great.
And I can set up a time with Brandon or somebody and like show them what windows we're, we're having issues with.
Yeah. Because we get a contractor lined up, I imagine he'd probably run points on what's going on in the building.
That's something maybe this guy can do or.
Yeah.
I can see, yeah. Well, I mean, I only take one guy.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a.
Can't stop it. I gotta call it then.
Well, thank you for coordinating, wherever you can for that. Are there any questions for Eric's budget proposal up here?
Just, I put twenty thousand in there, I don't know what we're gonna spend. I don't know what we're gonna do, but I think wherever we go, it's gonna be probably that. At least, so. And again, there is, if you look year to date, there is twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand remaining in this year's budget, so. If that is something that we wanna tackle on other coding, that was nineteen, I don't know what the, give us a deal since it's last, I, I don't know, I can by-stated the last one, but I don't know, we can discuss that in two weeks or wherever, but there is some money in there for this year that's allocated for that. Plus one, so.
Okay.
And then the second page, which is outside Eric, you'll see this is the city portion. This is just interior, just no, you know, maintenance and repair issues. I put a thousand there and then the insurance is seventeen hundred, so twenty-seven hundred is the, is the total there. And then.
What's the third page about?
It's just a copy from the.
Yeah, that's just a, that's an extra copy.
The last line got cut off, it's not, that's it, it's on your first budget page.
Okay. Sorry, that's what I'm looking for, the taxes, some in the last page are.
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred for taxes, so.
On the library?
No, no, the history center page.
The history center pays eleven hundred dollars for tax on taxes? The city doesn't get any kind of a.
It's cause the apartments are rented upstairs. Yeah, there's, there's apartments that are rented, so they tax the building.
Sold that, filled it up with foam up there.
Any other questions with the history center?
Ethan? All right. We'll move on, five B, budget presentation.
Thanks, Eric.
Budget presentation for Southeast Lynn.
Did you get a mic or?
Come on over.
I think Brandon shared some info with you guys maybe last month, cause they were supposed to.
I put it back in there.
Okay, perfect. So not a lot to cover other than those highlights. Just, I did not do an ask for an increase this year, our costs are going up like everybody's. But so far the last couple of years, we've had a surplus, so we don't need an effort for more at this point. The community has been amazing, our fundraising has continued to go very well. If any continues to increase as we've seen it this year, I'm sure it might be a different story. Like other food pantries around the state are, visits are up forty percent in twenty twenty-two, so actually hardest year we've had, which is surprising after, after twenty twenty. But one of the things I wanted to just mention, our community garden that we've been doing for the last several years, has been going really well. This year, we gave out two tons of fresh produce to people in the community, so it's a really great project. It's been going really well, but as you know, it's over in the area, the development behind brothers, so we're only able to use that land until it's developed. So I know when there were initial conversations about the nature park, there was some discussion about doing a community garden there. So we would definitely be interested in continuing that discussion, cause we know we're gonna need another location at some point. You know, that land's not just gonna sit empty forever.
How many tons?
Two tons, yeah, yeah. All volunteer, and it was all donated labor and so.
Probably donated plants to do.
Donated plants, donated labor, donated tilling, yeah, all of that, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And people love, we didn't, none of it went to waste, people love getting all of the fresh produce throughout the summer, so. And since I did delay until today, I can tell you about our holiday season, so we did a hundred and thirty-two holiday food boxes for Thanksgiving, a hundred and forty-seven for Christmas. We coordinate with both of the school districts for the adoptive families, so together we covered two hundred people with gifts for adoptive family. And then our seventy-seven seniors on our list got gifts as well. And then with our Toys for Tots, we had people come in and shop and over a hundred more kids received gifts from that. So a lot of, a lot of holiday cheer in the community. And we've been excited to return to the congregate dining on Fridays. We have brought to about eight regulars on Fridays that come and play bingo and have lunch together. And back to more in-person events and fundraisers as well, so. Question?
It's busy, John.
It is, but we like that. Oh, and I did wanna mention, I really appreciate whoever runs the city's Facebook page, sharing our posts and that really helps us with, with visibility and stuff, so. Appreciate that.
It's Marsha.
Let's go, Marsha.
Do you have a weekly food pantry, where a lot of the food pantries are only open a week or once a month?
That's true, and they are full choice, which we're pretty proud of as well, and we do delivery, which is also pretty rare. So we have a lot of people that, you know, are ill or don't have good, reliable transportation, so, yeah, we're proud of this.
Well, and the other additional non-thinking part is, is that you're already checking on those people when you're delivering lunches and, and whatever, so. It's a double check, really good one.
Do you have full staff now?
We do, yes, we do, and we're hopeful, the board did make a decision, I think I mentioned in here, to increase pay to align better with other nonprofits in the area, because we were much lower than other area nonprofits, so we're hopeful that'll help us retain this.
Well, congratulations, because a whole lot of that's your leadership.
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good question.
All righty. Moving on to five C, budget presentation in the lungs.
They have copies.
They have copies of everything? Okay, so before you guys, you all have a copy of our budget request. First and foremost, and finally have our twenty, twenty-two numbers. We were two hundred and four calls, sorry, two hundred and eighty calls over what we did last year, so we were up about thirty percent. Broke nine hundred. Going into this year, I think I talked in the board meeting that I anticipated we were gonna just barely break eight hundred. So the fact that we actually skyrocketed past our initial assessment is quite astounding for us. And the fact of what we're doing right now, you know, we're consistently one of the few services in the area, especially volunteer service, that is consistently responding, making sure that we're covering our calls and making sure that our community is, is really protected. You know, it's, it's not something that all the volunteer services are saying or being able to do. But with that comes kind of a question of sustainability. We all know that our communities are growing. We know that we've got a fantastic volunteer force and that we want to continue and nurture that, that volunteer force coming up. So saying that, my ask maybe sounds a little counterintuitive, but we are asking for additional funding so we can actually start transitioning towards a hybrid service where we would have basically twenty-four seven paramedic coverage with some career staff. And where that staff is gonna come in is it's gonna help me facilitate training, education programs, make sure that we're addressing things we're actually looking into and try and find ways that we can work with Southeast Lynn for community health programs, making sure that, you know, we can kind of build up their already strong program, to maybe bring some health checks into the Southeast Lynn Community Center and things of that nature, giving our community outreach, all those things that a good community ambulance strives to do. So this would be in partnership with the City of Mount Vernon, as well as a share of Lisbon Mount Vernon ambulance pitching in. You know, a big thing that we do right now is we do provide assistance to other agencies. Mechanicsville, who at this time has a single paramedic, who happens to be unable to respond for the moment, has been requesting our assistance along with numerous other agencies. We do get paid for that, so that's not just a free service to them. But this will help us maintain consistency for them, for us, and hopefully build on those relationships for, you know, future partnerships and things of that nature. So what questions do you guys have initially?
So just so, we'll go down the list here.
Looks like it's.
Might be able to explain it a little bit if you wanna, it's, it's short enough, we can do that. The revenue's up top, so that's gonna be what we take in from the City of Mount Vernon and the ambulance service. As you recall, I wanna say, is it twenty-eight percent or twenty-four percent that the City of Lisbon pays for your, your wage?
It's somewhere right around there.
I can't remember the exact number.
Just be the, the benefits, the ambulance supports the full salary.
That's right.
And the benefits are stuck between all three entities.
So, so there's your, what we, what we take in. The sixty-nine thousand out, we paid Jake, he's a city employee for the City of Lisbon. Then you have the benefits. We are able to, if you see the group insurance, that's been rolled into the employee benefit levy. So that's, that goes with all the other employees, so we don't need to put that into this budget.
Oh, is it the, the general levy?
Yep, the employee, the employee benefit. Yep. And so the, the money he's talking about, if you go down to payments to other agencies. If you recall from several years ago, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar asking. He dropped it down to eighty-six hundred a couple of years ago. And then we started to pay for that twenty-eight percent of his ipers and his benefits and all that stuff. So it's been eighty-six hundred for the last couple of years, so now you see he's asking eighteen, five, fourteen. So it's about a ten thousand dollar increase, that is gonna be for our portion of the part-time help, what he's projecting.
Yeah, and we are trying to do this as efficiently as possible. The, the shifts will actually be a combination of staff of basically onsite and on-call. So it'll be a twenty-four hour shift with twelve hours onsite, twelve hours on-call, where they will be, you know, if they live at home or live within the communities, they'll be able to go home and respond from home. But having them onsite for twelve hours and being compensated for that time, you know, adds a lot of opportunity for projects, for education, for orientation and a lot of those aspects.
And if you take the total, what we would pay out is ninety-three thousand, six thirty-four, but we're taking in seventy-three thousand, three fifty. So the difference is about twenty thousand, three hundred is what we're paying out. If you go back and look at nineteen and twenty, we actually were paying more money than, than we would today, and we're adding staff, so I think it's an easy.
And as much value as they do, they need the staff. We don't wanna overwork you guys for sure, cause that doesn't do anything good for your.
For those that don't know, the sheriff's department have the Rescue Fifty-Seven. That's not always staff, not always available, but when you see that in town, that's generally the paramedic that's coming. So we may have a paramedic that's needs help or assistance, or we need, we need one because we don't have one. So that just, you know, we won't have to rely on questionable, if something's questioning, you know, if it's available or not.
I don't think it's a terrible ask, Jake, so.
Thank you.
And you're already working with the Wellness Coalition rural and, you know.
Yep, so we did a lot of our outreach through the Wellness Coalition. You know, we, we do a lot of education with different groups, whether it be hands-only CPR, CPR certifications, things like that. We're working on developing actually a community response class to kind of help people understand, you know, at the point that you have to call nine-one-one or somebody's having chest pain or a cervical stroke, you know, what actions can you take to help us when we get there? And that's all stuff that we can build on with, with additional staff hours.
You guys also have a cadet program, don't you?
Yes, we're really excited, so it's brand new this year. So we have four cadets currently, it's aimed at high school students. So juniors and seniors who maybe would have an interest in EMS or healthcare, and they get to come do some training with us. We get them CPR certified, staff elite certified, and they get to do ride-alongs with us, so that's a, a fun program, it's, it's been very valuable so far, so.
All right, I don't have a question.
All right, thank you, Jake, thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
All righty. Five B, parks and recreation.
Hello, everybody, we should have a copy of revenues and expenditures for both parks and recreation. I'm just gonna go over the expenditures and I am going to start off with parks, if you guys have that one in front of you. So the first thing for salaries and wages. Salaries and wages, regular full-time, we have fifty-three thousand, that is up eight thousand from the current physical year, fiscal year. You'll notice that we're already at twenty-seven thousand through six months, so that's why we upped that. And then regular part-time, we have ten thousand, I can let Brandon talk a little bit on this, but this is the thought of the sports complex and extra mowing and things that are gonna need to, or need to be done. An employee strictly for mowing, and then just like we have on the past summer help, we have plans for three summer help kids as well, so that's where we came up with that ten thousand. I don't know if you wanna add anything, Brandon?
Yeah, so as you recall, last year we added summer help back in and it went very well. This spring, which David will be talking about later, is the water main project. And I did get a little bit of good news from Eric at B and K last week. Originally, there was gonna be a south crew and a north crew, and we were gonna basically allocate one employee maintenance crew to each crew to do the project. So it was really gonna limit our staffing down to two guys. Now it's kinda all in one project, so we're only gonna need one. But what I did in this line was, I would like to add potentially one or possibly two additional summer help, just because we're have to get, we're gonna have to take all the mowing out there, and right now, it's pretty significant of what we do now to keep up, especially when the grass is growing. The nice thing is with this is, we'll still have to have the public works personnel with the water line project. So we could also have some of the summer help kids help on the maintenance side. And then have another summer help kid, the extra kid, do what the other two were doing last summer. So that's why that line items up a little bit, we can discuss this later on, but that's, that's why the money is, is allocated in that way.
How many more acres are we mowing in the future?
Uh, we just.
Twenty, close to twenty.
Yeah.
If you take down all the work and. Wide open area of grass.
The, the salaries for parks, I mean, part of that's yours and then the other half of it's like in recs or something, correct?
Correct.
And there's, there's also, I think Rodman's comes out of this as well.
Okay, that's the.
Cause they helped a little bit with him do different things, so.
Right.
It's not just drinking salary coming out of it.
I mean, just ten K hardly sounds like it's gonna cover three part-time help in the.
So the summer guys are the, like this year was two high school kids, and I think they probably, they're around two thousand apiece. If you recall, we hired, hired one and then hired one late. The other, the other one was just barely at two thousand, so.
Okay.
As you can, well, I think on the recreation. Some of it come out of the part-time salaries under recreation too, so.
Recs only has the one salary line.
Yeah, so.
Is that missing?
Yes.
That's the part-time.
Yep.
And then some of it's split with grades too, so.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry, Jake, go ahead.
No, you're good. So we will get to employee benefits, group insurance, and we have eleven thousand, that's my health insurance. Allowance for uniform, we just have two hundred and fifty there, for a total of eleven thousand, two fifty. We will get down to staff development, training, we did five hundred for trainings that I'll go to. Maintenance and utilities, repair maintenance and utilities, so building maintenance and repair, we have five thousand for that. You'll see that that's down from what we've had. That was the barns, that's where some of that money came from. Grounds maintenance and repair, we're at fifteen thousand. After talking to Brandon, we're just gonna kind of feel this out and see what happens, but, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's normally around seven to eight thousand in that.
So the big expense last year was the electrical for the park lights. And then we did the boring of the water line at the, at the pond. So that come out of there, I don't foresee a lot, so usually for what it costs to maintain everything is about seven to eight thousand. Now we're adding all this, I just kinda doubled it, we'll just see how it, fertilizer and fuel and all that.
Will the diamonds get added this year?
We're hoping. We're hoping that this goes out the bid this winter yet, and then spring, summer, they start.
Does this include, and it might not be on the, I don't know, does this include drag shop insurance and your liquor license?
Would fall under recreation, right?
Yes, but it's, no, we haven't really gone there yet.
Okay.
I did put twelve hundred under that, but I don't know what.
Drag shop, you're gonna have a little bit more than that, probably. I, I mean, depending on if you get a temporary for a certain timeframe or a full year, but.
I would, I would guess under this budget, this would be for, you know, if we did something at the park.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was put in there too, cause it might be a little bit of a surprise.
Yeah.
All scott, no experience, that's all it looks like.
Yeah, I talked to him a little bit about it. Vehicle operations, forty-five hundred, you'll see that we've already, year to date, after six months, we're at twenty-two hundred. Vehicle repair, we have two thousand, we knocked that down a little bit, as you can see, we're only, year to date, we're at six hundred. Operational equipment, repair, we have three thousand for that, a year to actual date after six months, we're right around nineteen hundred. Any, any questions on that first page at all?
No.
Okay. So electric, gas. So electric gas expense, we put ten thousand. You can see we're at forty-five hundred, so almost five, five thousand after six months, so that's why we upped that there. And we'll jump down to contractual services. For insurance expense, we did three thousand. That's insurance for equipment, things like that. Originally, we had nineteen hundred. We don't have anything year-to-date. I don't know what.
That comes down here.
That'll come in at the end. Payments to other agencies, we left that at two hundred. Programs, we went from three hundred to a thousand. And other contractual services, we went from two thousand to three thousand. That, that's the four bodies. So the thought is if we end up, I don't think it's going to happen, but if we were to get up to the sports complex or something like that, we need the four bodies or just extra. For the stuff that we already have, you can see that we're already at eighteen hundred and we still have six months left. So that's why we upped that to three thousand. For commodities, minor equipment, sixteen thousand. This is a big change from previous years. And the reason for this is a new Hustler mower. The one I have now is getting older. Still runs, still in good shape, but getting older. And with all of the new property of the sports complex, we're looking into another Hustler from Fat Guy's. It's a seventy-two inch instead of a sixty-inch. The best model they have now, all updated. I don't know if you want to add anything on that?
Well, there's two quotes, one's in front of you, from Fat Guy's, either power sports or motor sports. And then I just went online to what you can buy this unit for. Keep in mind, this is sixty, sixty inches or seventy-two, so that's why the price fluctuation. So we're getting a seventy-two, which I would assume would be the eighteen-two ninety-nine. His quote is thirteen-eight-twenty-one. It is a year, the year previous model, nothing is, nothing's changed since then. There's zero miles or zero hours. It's similar to what we have. The plan originally was, I was thinking we were going to need a, some sort of a field grooming mower for the soccer fields and all the complex, more like a golf course type for a field. But I did find out that they're using Hustler mowers with the striping kits out at Triple Play Park. And I don't know if you go by there in the summer, those look really nice. So I think we can get away with a new Hustler mower and then put a striping kit on the old mower, which is a sixty-inch deck. This one is a rear discharge, this new one, which is a big safety aspect of that. You're not throwing the grass and whatever you hit out beside. But you can't put a striping kit on the rear discharge mower, so. This is in stock and as you can see, this price will be held. If we tell them we want it, it will be held until July. And that's when we would pay it, so.
We would have to issue a PO right away though, so that he can hold it for us?
Yep. So anyway, the Hustler we have now is getting up there in hours. Now, keep in mind, they're, they're to sell product, but the recommendation's been to trade these in every two years if they're excessive use like we have. Obviously, we're not doing that, but I think this is three or four years old now.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to get to the point where we're going to start having problems and with the amount of grass we have to mow, I just don't know if I feel comfortable going into this season. I, I feel comfortable going into the season, but later on, I think we're going to have issues. So if we can keep that old one maybe out there and then use the new one everywhere else that we have to do, I think we can. And then also keep in mind, on the north side, we can use the John Deere with the Bellamower out there, so we could have potentially three going at a time.
We've had good luck with these, haven't we?
Absolutely.
Yeah, schools have been using them.
I think this is the third one, I believe.
Yeah, second. This, this will be, yeah, this will be.
This will be the third one.
Yeah, for reasons I've been here. But obviously, the one we have now still runs and can be used too, so. Okay, ground expenditures, we have nothing there. Pool supplies is going to stay the same at five thousand. And other supplies is twenty-two hundred, which is the same. I will jump down to miscellaneous, just a hundred dollars there. Playground equipment, two thousand. And other capital outlay, we have zero. So for a total of a hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty for parks. Does anybody have any questions at all on parks?
Is the striping kit in this budget yet?
It is not.
I'm going to try to get that before out of this budget.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars. Since that's the quote today, actually, on that, so.
I'm going to try, since I seen it, I'm going to try to squeeze it in on this year.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I will jump over to recreation expenditures. So for salary and wages, regular part-time, twenty-seven thousand, up from twenty thousand for our current budget. You'll see that we're already at twelve thousand after six months, plus again, adding an extra person for mowing, we'll go into that as well. Staff development, association dues, two hundred. You see we're at one-eighty for this year already. Training, we do not have anything for training for recreation because that should fall under parks. So you'll see, we'll go to repair maintenance, utilities, building maintenance and repair, we have a thousand. Ground maintenance and repair, we don't have anything. All this stuff, obviously, is covered under parks. And then operational equipment and repair, we have zero for that as well. And until communication expense, fifteen hundred for that.
Before you move on, I see the park shed over there on the left, the ten thousand. Is this the garage we're going to share with the school?
Yeah, I think that's probably not going to happen. They may do it, I don't know, but I think we're going to move forward with something out of the, since we're down the road here. We'll move forward down the complex.
Okay.
Contractual services, insurance expense, that's liability insurance, twelve-hundred. Payments to other agencies, this is for like newspaper advertisements for all my sports and events. That's two thousand. Halloween Town, we have two thousand. You'll notice that's up by fifteen hundred. The reason for that is we need to update the stuff that we have and there's new stuff that we need to get. We really, since I've been here, we haven't bought, that's one of our biggest events and we haven't bought anything brand-new for that since I've been here. Here and there, we'll buy some small stuff, but there's some, there's some updating that needs done, so that's why, after talking to Brandon, we raised that. And then programs, we have twelve-hundred for that. I will jump to the next page unless anybody has any questions. Okay, other contractual services, a hundred dollars. We'll jump to commodities, minor equipment, four thousand, just up five hundred from this year. Office supplies, always usually around a hundred. You'll notice the sports, so soccer, basketball, baseball, softball, T-ball, football. We tried to up each of those, just because we're growing each and every year. So for soccer, thirty-five hundred, that's up a thousand. Basketball, eighteen hundred. We actually dropped that one, just because I bought a lot of new stuff for that already. New basketball, things like that, so we actually dropped that. We didn't really spend a whole lot there. Baseball, softball, T-ball, two thousand, so up that by five hundred. And then football, the current budget, fifteen hundred, we upped that by a thousand there.
Do your umpires and refs come out of this?
They do.
Okay.
They're also out of that part-time.
Oh, part-time, they, oh, okay.
No?
No, they're made out of the program, this program, that they're making.
All the programs are out of this.
Yeah, they come out of the programs. Okay, miscellaneous, two hundred dollars and then another capital outlay, I have nothing, for a total of fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. Anybody have any questions on any, parks or recreation?
Why are you so expensive? That's true, it's all.
I was trying to look, what did that add?
Where did that add?
No, yeah, I see the sports, Brandon, sports come.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Last year's, last year's.
The increases, well, to recreation, the increase appears to be.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, probably about twenty-five hundred bucks.
Parks is a little bit higher. This, parks, we got to kind of throw off a little bit because we have, the lights really put a wrench into that. But we're about six, seven thousand higher than last year in parks.
But there's new programs that we know history on, so.
And the nice thing is with Parks and Rec, I can only tell you that the hope is that the revenues start to climb with that, so.
I would think that would become a problem. Too many people want it, usually.
That'd be a good problem to have.
That's a good problem. Any other questions for Greg?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Okey-dokey.
Bradley?
Halloween.
I don't know if I'm going to go down every single line like he did. I don't know if I'm going to go down here for an hour.
We expect you to.
You can't stand that long, right?
Oh, no, never mind. But pretty much in a nutshell, I think you've got everything in front of you. Overall, if you look again, from what we requested to what we're proposing, it's about a four-thousand dollar difference in several different lines. Went up, some went down. Obviously, we got some variations. One of the biggest things, I guess, just to you, where if you look and try to compare previous years to current, especially like in the current year, we have the AFG grant, so it looks like our budget was really high last year and that was really going through the floor. Well, if we got the grant, it increased the budget, but that wasn't really the case, so. But really, for the most part, as you go down through the budget, really all we're looking for is increase in salaries and wages from our allocations. Insurance is up, and basically in a nutshell, medical supplies have just gone up. I mean, I can go down through individual line items, but it's really some went up, some went down, so. Even like in staff development, we just asking for a little bit of increase like in training. Maintenance repair, there's a line item, one line item went down. Same thing with public communication that went down. And then down to insurance, insurance is always a big thing for us. That actually went up a little bit. We're looking at, it's looking at twelve thousand, maybe thirteen thousand for this next year, so. And then, like I said, with minor equipment, with the AFG grant, when you look in there, it looks, looks a little weird compared to the current budget. Just trying to adjust individual line items accordingly. Not the biggest jump in there, like we, like I mentioned, with medical supplies, went up about five hundred bucks.
Most of the stuff from the fire department is kind of fixed prices. There's really no control. Minor equipment, medical supplies. Really, that's about it, is all that we actually control. Everything else, we just kind of went through the list and saw where we're at and seeing the projection of where we'll be.
And even if you go back, I think you may see the history, going back to like two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty. We're not really too far out. It's very comparative, actually, a little over our twenty, 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 twenty and twenty-one budget, so. And we threw out about eighty-six thousand there, now we're at eighty-two, three fifty, so.
Okay.
My only question is, I just don't know if it's being done or not, but when the ambulance and the fire, fire department goes with the ambulance, do we charge at all with the ambulance?
And private.
Well, the nursing performance service.
Now, there's, so can I? So when, when you look at patient insurance, so believe it or not, ambulance is actually under the Department of Transportation at the federal level. So we're under that, so we're looked at strictly a transport service and that's how patient billing is set up. So what it comes down to is in order to send the billing through a patient, there has to be a transport. So even on calls that we go to, we maybe take some vital signs, something like that, we don't bill for that either. So it's strictly the transport piece that, that gets billed out, so.
I see, I just was curious if it had changed.
It's always been that way.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Brad?
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, sir.
The capital improvement for the fire department, that is set aside funds for the new truck, that's the twenty-five thousand there.
We've been doing twenty-five consistently, haven't we?
Uh, we bumped it up this year, currently.
Okay.
Just because the prices of the new trucks at ten or fifteen thousand, we've never even come close. I mean, they're five and six hundred thousand. We're still going to need supplemental funding when we come to that point, so. But that's what that's for.
Okay.
Then I have EMA. This is pretty straightforward as well. The minor equipment, you kind of see, we don't always use it. The reason that is there is because, God forbid, disaster hits, it at least gives you some money to start with before, I mean, we're going to blow that out of the water if something ever hits. So, but that just, we always allocate that money just as a good starting point to handle whatever we need, so. Other than that, it's, insurance is for the sirens, the gas is for, we prorate the heat and the utilities amongst all the departments and there's a, there's a form that they have, so that's what that's for. And then the sirens also use electricity, so. Okay.
I do have one in the last two weeks. What happened to the siren one day? Did you hear it? It went all goofy and didn't blow the way it normally did. I didn't know if something.
It may have been a fire.
Yeah, but it wasn't too typical. It just sounded, you know, I almost thought it kept up. I was coming down because some kid was playing.
Well, they needed your help with a fire. They kept calling you and you weren't coming.
Yeah, if you ever, if you ever hear that, I mean, call me, but I, I'll bet that was a call and.
It could have been.
I think, I think that was last week. It was the week before. It was a, it was a constant wail and I don't know if somebody held a button, you know, when they tripped.
Usually a constant wail, isn't that?
Tornado.
But I mean, it'll get, stayed out there for a while, maybe to my point before it came back down. So it could have been confused and it seemed like it was a little longer.
I don't know, I was just curious.
Yeah, if you ever have issues or hear something, just call me.
I think you were screwing off on vacation.
Couldn't hear that Wisconsin.
Alright, any more questions for EMA?
No, I don't have any questions.
Alright, thank you, Brandon. Five-F, discussion possible action in reference to set bid date for water main rehabilitation project.
That's neat. I'll hand out a draft schedule and we'll talk through this. We end up shifting the public hearing slightly just depending upon your preference. We usually have two options on the public hearing. We can either do it a couple meetings before we take bids and consider, or sometimes we'll do it same meeting as we have ordered to. So it's a little tight normally. And the reason for that is that we have to provide enough notice in newspaper and they publish on Thursday and we have to have four to twenty days. That puts it pretty close if we get it on a Thursday before the Monday of the meeting, so. Otherwise, we're looking at tonight, setting the public hearing bid date as the United Inn of Gates, on the sixteenth. We have plenty of specs available, we have draft plans, just need to go through and make any last-minute changes on those and then have them available to bidders. We'll post the notice to bidders at the same day and then that gives them three weeks to look over plans. We have the notice being published for the public hearing on the nineteenth. Here we go. And then the twenty-third, that could be our next council meeting, for the public hearing, February ninth, recent bids for the project, thirteenth award. And we have April third as notice to proceed. The contractors generally take some time to oversee the materials, especially with the issues they're having currently, so. We'll probably have some time for some little review and then schedule for a construction meeting. Gets then started this spring and as was discussed earlier, we're going to have two crews working on different parts of town. If we do this all concurrently, that's about twenty-eight blocks of water main replacement. Going to take a little while. I'm trying to do it in phases so we don't have everything shut down and make a disaster out of traffic control. So that gives them a while to, to get that done through the winter and into next spring. And then we do have, if they finish up around June, seating window closes in September. We can't really see July, August because it's too, too hot in your eye. So that's why the September twenty-ninth completion date is on there. So that gives you a general project schedule and. So that gives you a general, um, project schedule, and, uh, I would suggest that if you're okay with holding the public hearing at the next meeting, we set it that way. If you want to wait until it commits, and, uh, hold the public hearing, we'll accept the project. That would be the other option.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to set the public hearing for January twenty-third?
So.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, can we roll call this?
Go ahead. It doesn't matter.
All right, we'll go ahead and roll call this. Uh, Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nathan, aye. Thank you, David. All right. Uh, five G, discussion possible action reference to set bid day for well number five project.
This will look a lot like the other one, and we have a little shorter schedule, so this one does not include the ample tube building and control building yet. Generally, we recommend is that for a well, we have all sorts of surprises after we grow the well, uh, that could come up, so. There you go. We're going to find out that we may have some issues. We generally recommend drilling well, getting the water quality tests, and then, uh, once we have that test data, then we can bid a second phase, which would be the end of the building, the well pump, and the fitness unit that goes on top of the water main. That way we don't have a bunch of money to something and find out later that we've got problems and it's hard to go back.
Okay.
So this is for the well, drilling the well, putting casing and doing the water quality testing. And once again, the front end of the schedule is to set the public hearing on bid date tonight, um, plenty of specs available same time next week. Uh, post the notice to bidders, and then on the nineteenth, publish a notice of public hearing, twenty-third, again, hold the public hearing. Receive bids on the ninth, and then, uh, the thirteenth, shortly after, we will be able to work on track and give the notice proceeding in March. We generally like to have those guys, uh, get started as quickly as they can. Haven't had much of an issue with casing. It's all expensive, but it's been fairly available. So, uh, be able to get them started, and hopefully by August, uh, we'll have the, uh, test completed. Some of those tests take about six to eight weeks on water quality testing, so it's a little bit of, uh, waiting on the back end before we can give approval to set the control building and, uh, water main after that. So that's, uh, again, setting the, uh, the bid date and public hearing. Public hearing will be the twenty-third, and the bid date would be on February ninth.
Okay. Um, once again, do I have a motion to set the public hearing for January twenty-third?
Motion, yep.
Yeah, go again.
A motion and a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Thank you again, Dave. Okay. Moving on to six A, set public hearing from.
Yep, you're good.
For public, for water main rehabilitation project.
Okay, so truthfully, what you guys just did was set the bid date. Now we're going to set the public hearing date. So you set the bid dates for February ninth, now we're going to set the public hearings for January twenty-third. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Okay.
It's all right. I got it right in a minute, so we're good.
Okay. So, set public hearing for water main rehabilitation project. Um, I'll make a motion, set the public hearing for January twenty-third.
I'll second that public hearing on January twenty-third.
All right. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Um, six B, set public hearing for well number five project.
I make a motion to set the public hearing, um, for well number five improvement on January twenty-third, twenty, twenty-three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We're doing the roll call. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nathan says aye. Good job. Thank you. I'm waiting for that. All right. Six C, set public hearing for proposed maximum property tax levy for fiscal year twenty-four for January twenty-third.
So this is the max tax levy. We do this every year, um, part of the state requires, so if we could do that, I'm hoping that we'll have it done for the twenty-third, so.
Sounds like the twenty-third will be a busy night.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to set that, uh, public hearing for January twenty-third. We got a motion, we got a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nathan says aye. Six E, uh, first reading of ordinance zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-two.
No, we're going to do D first.
We're going to do D first.
Yeah, you gotta do the public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's good.
All right. Uh, sixteen, public hearing for ordinance update to chapter seventy-eight golf carts.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Have a motion to go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are in public hearing.
So you'll see, uh, if you read the notes, um, long story short, the city created golf cart ordinance way back when, when they first allowed them in town. Uh, we added UTVs once that became a thing, and now the state has passed regulation, um, so we can't charge, uh, UTVs to, uh, come into town. They have a registration fee.
Registration fee.
Yep, through the state, like a snowmobile or what have you.
Yep.
So what we're doing is removing all the language about UTVs off of the golf cart, so now it's back to an original golf cart ordinance. This mirrors Mount Vernon's, other than the routes and what have you, and, uh, both city attorneys have approved it. Chief, do you have any?
No, the only other change I can think of that Brandon hasn't covered on too is we, in both of the ordinance, and we've talked about the ATV one as well, um, it will allow council to define roadways by, make changes to the defined roadways by resolution, rather than having to go back and do a full ordinance change, so.
Okay, so if you decide to change.
More and more of a problem. I mean, man, everybody in their life, Dan's got a.
They're everywhere.
Something going on the roads anymore.
Yeah, but, but the state making their change for the ATV UTVs, because they've got the clubs that go from city to city, they didn't want them, to have to register to every city they're going to, um, so they put it back under the, the code, in which, you know, when we get to the ATV portion, that more follows the state code requirements for that. Just removes our ability to register them and charge the fee to have them permitted.
Okay. The fees will remain in place for the golf carts, though?
Yes, everything is the same. Yep, we're just removing UTVs.
Just go to UTVs then.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Uh, any other questions? I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we can go to six E. First reading of ordinance zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-two, update to chapter seventy-eight golf carts. Possible suspension of rules and placing of ordinance on third and final reading. Looking for a first reading. Uh, motion.
To approve.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nathan, I say aye. Um, all right, now, possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on the third and final reading. Any interest in doing that?
I don't see anything that's going to change. I know we don't oftentimes like this, but this is pretty cut and dry. Um, we're still allowing UTVs. It's going to just be on the next ordinance, so it's up to you guys what you want to do. I don't see anything changing, though.
It's really, it's required by the state for us to do this.
Yeah, I don't think they, we can't change much.
I'll, I'll move to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
All right, I have a motion. I will have, I will second. Um, we'll roll call for this. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye.
Good.
And then, yeah, um, John, you want to approve the third reading?
Prove the third reading.
All right.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye.
Good job. Keep going.
I don't want to do that.
You got three more. We got fifteen hundred to tell.
Okay. Six F, public hearing for ordinance update to chapter one-twenty liquor licenses. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing.
Says, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, we are in public hearing for update liquor license.
So this is just language that came down from the state, so they're changing the word liquor to alcohol. So instead of liquor license, it's alcohol license, and instead of liquor control license, it is retail alcohol license. So we just changed our code to mirror what the language that they're using, so it's all one sheet of music. Again, I don't see this really going to change, um, so that's all I have. Christina, I can answer any questions, Jeff.
Okay. Any questions or comment from the crowd?
Nice for doing that important work.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, um, I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Six G, first reading of ordinance zero-eight dash twenty-twenty-two, update to chapter one-twenty liquor licenses. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion for the first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Uh, Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Um, possible suspension of rules and placing words.
I make a motion to suspend the third and final reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Sarah, you want to do the third reading?
Yeah, um, third reading, suspend the third reading, yeah. Oh, no, motion to approve, yeah.
Third reading.
Yes, motion to approve, sorry.
All right.
I got lost in all of this. There is so much.
We got a motion and we have a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Okay.
One more.
Good. All right. Six H, public hearing for ordinance update to chapter seventy-five ATV and snowmobiles. I make a motion to go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, we're in public hearing.
So this is where we put UTV into the ATV snowmobiles.
Okay.
Uh, Chushan, other than changing the language that reflected the state code, is there anything irrelevance?
No, uh, again, it maintains the state, it's, we're really going to follow state code. State code requires our operation be thirty-five mile an hour or less, um, so that was some of the consideration I talked with Brandon with, and we'll come out on some of the roads we're choosing, uh, and he didn't do resolutions yet on defined highways or anything like that. So we'll bring that forward again later, but, um, you know, I, I've got concern about them operating on business thirty between Mount Vernon and Cleveland with the hills and the speed limits there, since the speed limit is, is ten miles faster than the ATVs, UTVs, especially with the hills and stuff like that. It could be just a bad situation from there. Um, but there's areas in town we've considered that, you know, like even downtown, uh, by Casey's and stuff like that, it's not necessarily, um, that concerning from there. So we'll bring that forward, resolution. The rest of it is pretty much, we're going to follow state code, uh, which is kind of what I think the state wanted us to do anyway.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments? All right, I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Six I, first reading of ordinance zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, update to chapter seventy-five ATV and snowmobiles. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Aye. Um, possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on third and final reading. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion and a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Um, do I have a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance zero-nine dash twenty-two?
Make a motion to approve the third.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike? Nathan, aye.
You got the great question. All right.
All right, figure it out. All righty. Um, six J, approving, approved resolution zero-one dash twenty-twenty-three, council appointments for twenty-twenty-three.
The only change I had to this is Brent Clark will not be renewing his seat on the park board.
Okay. And then you will see, for anyone interested, uh, historic preservation has a vacancy, and I put in front of you, uh, the letter from Mark, um, just talking about his wage increase, uh, per, per hour, um, so anything like that's there for.
Where, where is that budgeted? Do we, I mean, do we even have?
So we haven't done that, so that's in the city hall.
Right.
General.
Okay.
So that'll be, uh, it's the next meeting or the following one, but.
Imagine your budget will increase by whatever percentage.
I'll just kind of look to where we're at and then add that percentage to it.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
We're not using, I mean, we're way under in that category so far, so.
Sure. Um, does anybody have any comment or concern about the, uh, appointments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the, um, council appointments for twenty-twenty.
All right. We have a motion. I will second. Um, we'll roll call. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. Six K, approved resolution zero-two dash twenty-twenty-three, appointment of council liaisons for twenty-twenty-three.
I did not change any of these from last year, so if there's anything you guys want to change up, or, you know, Rick's gone, want to stick in with something, go ahead. This is the time to deal with, so.
Uh, any changes?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. All right. Six L, approved resolution zero-three dash twenty-twenty-three, transfer of funds from Park's capital outlay to sports complex fund.
So this was, uh, where some of the money was coming from to pay for the sports complex, so we're just transferring that over. Till we get the final bill, the funds will be there.
Okay. Hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
I say aye. All right. Item seven, uh, correspondence is, uh, library annual report summary.
Last meeting, you guys talked about, um, and asked Amy, since she did her budget, if she had a kind of a yearly traffic report, so I asked her if she could put something together to include in your packet this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody have a comment on that?
Nope, I'm good.
Good to go? All right.
Yep.
Moving on to, uh, eight A, city engineers report.
The two water projects here just before, you know, delaying the agenda, the one thing I have is that there are some rules that are coming out from EPA. Hopefully they don't impact us. It's PFOS, you may have heard that Central City had some of their water. It's a polyfluoride substance. It's kind of a forever chemical, you've been firefighting, water repellent type stuff. Uh, they're talking about possibly requiring that on the wastewater side of testing, and that would potentially impact land application songs. So I've been in contact with EPA for a number of different communities. Uh, one of the things that we look at is the pre-treatment agreement that we have with local industry to make sure there's nothing there that could potentially jeopardize, so we're probably going to be looking at that as we get into this year a little bit further, so. Just some things that, that may come up. You might hear some warnings about it, but, uh, we'll make sure that as, as we learn more, and EPA starts, uh, talking about what the testing requirements will be, that we bring up the speed on that. There are forty different compounds that are looking at potential requirements to test towards wastewater, so, uh, could get a little expensive. Hopefully, we, we can be able to test out with that after demonstrating after a couple of cycles that there's no detect. Uh, we do have to find something that we need to evaluate with the next episode. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that we're aware of that regulation, um, late last year, uh, December fifth, that EPA, and then what came out, and, uh, a lot of communities should be hearing more, and some of those will have to do quite a bit in order to do it, so.
Any speculation on how we could budget or anticipate anything like that, like Central City?
Central City had it in drinking water. A lot of communities, one in Mississippi, have it in drinking water. There's a facility that's upstream that was known to discharge certain implosives in there. Um, that could have ended up a little block first, uh, that Mississippi fed into. So we're far enough away and with that deeper wells, hopefully that's not an issue, but we would likely be testing at some point in the next year. And not to scare anybody, but just make sure, you know, that we are looking into it and we're trying to stay in front of that.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Fifth Avenue? Oh, that's far as what they're working on up there.
Yeah.
Remediation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the co-op had a, a site up on Fifth that, uh, was known to be a problem. They had an underground storage tank that was leaking over time. Uh, that did create some problems. They attempted to remediate that for quite a while. Uh, they, they are going to be replacing a segment of water main up there. Uh, they, they are going to be replacing a segment of water main up there because the PDC water main, yeah, it has a tendency that you can have that chemical migrate in through the PDC pipe influence. So they have to replace a certain section, um, within that flume area, um, that flume pipe with natural gaskets. So that is being done on their nickel, but you may see some activity up there that would be possibly for our project. And that's what that's about is if they are required.
They do, they're there today.
So, yeah, that's, that's what that's about is if they're required. It, it's been ongoing for quite some time. They attempted to put in, um, some, uh, flume meters, what it's called, so they eject it in the ground and try to evaporate the stuff and bring it up to the surface. And extract it that way. Uh, they ran that for about eight and a half, two years, did monitoring on it, didn't have real good luck with it, so now they have to make sure that the water main that's potentially jeopardized is replaced.
How many feet did they replace it?
Uh, I think it's about a hundred and fifty feet or so.
Well, I will tell you, they might have a little problem getting that cleaned up in there. We had a big spill years ago when I was fire chief and it ran clear down the highway through, uh, one of the big tanks. And there's a trench, you know, there's a ditch there all the way through Knoll Lock property.
Right.
And around the pole.
This, this was a ground, uh, contamination from the fuel tank that absorbed into the ground, so that's what they returned to remediate in that specific case, but, you know, certainly the fuel, fuel station there. I understand that that may have been.
And it's right in that area.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, moving on to eight B, public works director reports.
Travis is gone this week, so.
He needs to be at the beach.
Just giving a report here. Um, still working on picking up Christmas trees. I just recommend if you're gonna want us to pick them up, try to get them out there this week. You'll notice in the bills, we did, um, they had a plow that, uh, broke, the frame that broke. Uh, it was one that was scheduled to be replaced next year, um, so we ended up having to do that early. So that's the bill you see, um, and it was right during that, uh, storm of all the wind, so we went up and, uh, had that done. Just as a reminder, um, I know that straight around Christmas, it was really cold and the streets were kinda slick. Um, salt and sand do not work very well at that condition. Takes, you gotta get about five degrees. Uh, the sand even doesn't work. It, you know, it works for a little bit and then it gets pounded in and, uh, you end up with, uh, slick spots again. So we were treating as best we could, um, but if anybody has any questions with that, you can ask Travis or I. And we did have a water main break over on East South Street. Uh, we did, Travis and I made the decision to call Brecchi to help us. We had, um, an issue at the sewer plant that one employee was working on. Um, we had another employee of ours go get rock for that water main, and there was a gas line real close. So we, uh, used their expertise for the digging and assisting us with capping through the utilities there. So if anybody asks for questions, that's why it wasn't one that we, we could do with limited people, so. And that is all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Eight C, Parks and Rec Director report.
Not a whole lot. We're continuing to do snow removal as needed. Uh, we started boys' basketball practices on Sunday. Uh, first games will be on the twenty-first, and that'll be five weeks. We will start spring soccer registrations middle to end of February. That'll start at the end of March. And a big one is the Destination Iowa Grant that I've been working on with a lot of help from others for the past couple months. Um, that has been submitted. Um, I couldn't have without the people that helped, um, Brandon, office ladies, Travis, um, Historic Preservation Commission, Tree and Nature Park Board. Um, other individuals that volunteered to help out, so, uh, that's been submitted and we'll wait to hear back. Um, that's for the restoration of the barns and a nature walking path over at, uh, the McInnes property.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Drayton. Any questions?
Thank you, Drayton.
Uh, moving on to eight D, police department report.
Uh, been extremely busy the last couple weeks, a lot of different things going on, but, uh, and short-staffed, so that doesn't help either. Um, we had one officer that decided that he gotta get pulled away for jury duty, um, while we were staff, short-staffed as well. Um, good news is we're getting, uh, one back from medical, um, phasing back in and, um, we're looking forward to get them back up and running from there. Uh, still finishing up hiring process. Hopefully, um, next couple weeks we'll have a decision made, hopefully.
How many applicants did you end up getting?
Uh, we had all three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll keep plugging away. We also have.
Better than one.
Yeah, no, it is, absolutely. Um, but, you know, when you think back, we used to have, you know, forty people apply and twenty show up and you get down to a ten or, you know, eight to ten that were definitely viable. It's, it's a different, but it's, it's not a unique problem for us. It's everywhere. The big, big departments used to have four hundred show up and they're getting ten, uh, sort of things like that. So definitely a, a challenging time for that aspect. Uh, we, we've kept the application period open just until we do hire, um, and continue on from there, so. Very good.
And you've had a student shadow.
We have had a student, we had, will have begin this, this next week too. Thank you for reminding me of that. Um, Mount Vernon's got an internship. They do a J-term, um, this time every year, uh, which allows some pretty unique opportunities. So, um, we've absorbed in one of them for a, a police intern and, and we'll be shadowing them for, uh, this weekend. So it's awesome.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, eight, uh, F, um, no, sorry, eight E, ambulance director report. Let's try to skip you.
You guys have a report in front of you. I didn't, uh, didn't make the fact of it. Uh, not a lot to, to report, other than, um, November, we had a hundred and one calls. Um, we, we mimic that in December again. Um, cadet program's been up and running. Uh, like I said, they've gotten certified in a couple of, of classes for CPR, stop the bleed, bloodborne pathogens. They've undergone HIPAA trainings, so patient privacy. Um, we're currently sitting at four. We would really like to be at six to eight if possible, so if you know anybody that might be interested, um, send them my way. Um, otherwise, you know, the crew's been running pretty steadily. You know, we, we had a record year and are already on pace to, to kinda keep the trend going, so.
Is the cadet, uh, is it there an age?
Uh, sixteen.
Is sixteen and up?
Yep, sixteen and up, that's kinda what we look for, so. Yeah, the, the hope is the schools offer the ability to go get, go through the EMC Academy at Kirkwood, um, so they could theoretically walk out of high school certified as an EMC. Um, there's a lot of programs right now because paramedics are so short, um, that will pay for you to at least get partial funding if not your whole program paid for. So it's a great career opportunity for people who wanna try to get through school as little debt as possible. Do you wanna mention the sponsorship? Oh, yeah, um, so we have several, um, folks going through classes this year. Um, we have currently five enrolled in an EMC course through Kirkwood Community College, um, that starts on the seventeenth. Um, we have one going through critical care, paramedic, two through advanced ENT, um, which obviously presents a large cost to us. Um, we're very fortunate to have some local, um, businesses that utilize us, um, frequently help support that, um, cost. Mercy Medical Center has promised five hundred dollars. Uh, ABCM Corporation has donated two thousand three hundred and nine dollars, which is a full sponsorship for a student, um, as well as we, we received two thousand three hundred and nine dollars from, uh, Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundations Rapid Response Grant. So those are, are gonna be great opportunities to help us fund, um, folks going through the class and help our community to continue to be, you know, ready to respond, so.
That's great.
Yeah, we're at a roster of thirty-nine, um, members right now, which is pretty phenomenal, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, Jay.
We got two more and then we'll do the break before that, so. Okay. Eight F, uh, fire chief and city administrator report.
Uh, fire related have been very busy. Uh, we fought three fires, uh, within a week there in the cold stretch. Uh, one was in Solon, one was in Mechanicsville, and then we had one of our own. So kudos to the guys and the conditions. Um, it was brutal, so. And, uh, this last weekend, we did have our fire appreciation dinner out at Tin Roof. And, uh, years of service awards where Jason Blanks was at ten years of service. David Erbelsheimer was at twenty years of service and Danny Patton at twenty-five years of service. So I'd like to mention all three of those gentlemen for their, uh, hard work and dedication to the fire department. City administrator report. Just as a couple reminders, please do not blow or push your snow into the street under any condition. You need to maintain that snow on your property. We kinda deal with this every year. It just, it's, it's an ordinance and it just helps with everything, so please keep that in mind. Um, also, cars cannot be parked on the grass, so if you're parking your vehicles on the grass on your property, that is a nuisance violation. And I'll probably give you a call to move it, so, um, just please, you know, that. Um, other than that, uh, attended the E nine one one meeting for Lynn County. Uh, been working about every day on budget item stuff, as you can imagine. Also been working with, uh, rental inspections. I do need to give a shout out to Marcia. Uh, we did come across some residents that, um, like houses that were owned by individuals that were renting them out. So there was some, something that we needed to catch, so I did have Marcia help me, and she went online and went through all our accounts with the assessor site. And mirrored up those accounts so that we know we're not missing any, so, uh, we've been working with that. Been working with Lynn County building on the rental inspections and those are all going great. Uh, they are getting compliance now out of some people that, uh, we didn't before, so that was kinda the main thing why we went to them and, um, it's coming to fruition, so. Um, and then I just also wanna thank Drayton, uh, for spearheading the Destination Iowa Grant along with all the other individuals. I know he mentioned them, but some specifically Becky and, uh, Becky Hass, Hannah Patterson, Connie Meyer, Steve McAmill, Billy Kibby, and Robert Marian's aboard. Everyone worked together well and, um, it was a really good grant. Um, we did read a couple that had been submitted from other towns and ours was tenfold what there is, so hopefully that bodes well for a project of, that we're doing, so.
Did we, we weren't awarded yet, you're just completed.
Just, just completed and submitted, so we have to be in by the thirty-first, so we did it that week prior, I think, yours.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
I am happy to take any questions that you have, but that's my life in a nutshell.
Okay. All right. All right. Uh, eight G, council and mayor reports. I'll get started. I don't have anything other than just thanking the city workers and, um, for, you know, keeping us safe and keeping the, getting the roads clear. That's all I got.
You do?
John?
Uh, just thanks to all the city volunteers and employees that makes Lisbon a great place, it's alive.
Sarah?
Um, well, congratulations, Drayton. That's a big, um, that's a big step, uh, that grant, if received by us, so. That's a, that's a pretty good accomplishment for you, so congratulations, just in completing that. Um, with the help of everybody else, so thank you to all the other ones that helped out. Just wanna give a shout out to, um, the police department, the fire department, and public works and Parks and Rec. I know they, we were sub below zero many days, ambulance, and you guys continued to work outside in the cold. And so thank you to all of you guys who did that. I was at home, so I thank you guys for, um, doing what you guys do, so that's all I. Oh, and Brandon, can we put on the next agenda? Um, I know last time we talked, we had a meeting with the school, we were talking, we're supposed to come up with kind of our own contract for the agreement with the park. And I don't think we've really discussed that, have we?
No, not yet.
But I just thought, why not throw it on one of our agendas so we can kind of have that discussion?
Which one?
No, this, our agreement, our contract with the school.
Annual.
Our baseball. Our annual, uh, our last meeting that we had with the school, they said that they were gonna come up kind of with what they would like to see, and we would come up with, were you here?
Yeah. Do you have an issue with that going into February one, just as?
No, that's fine, that's fine. That is absolutely fine. I don't care. I just thought if we can get it on the agenda now, that way come. April. April, our next meeting, it's done over, or at least.
Brandon and I can sit down and go over it to, to the last.
Yeah, yeah, and if you wanna do a work session, I mean, I don't care, coming in a few minutes early before our meeting and discussing it too.
All righty, um.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go, move on to nine A, uh, possible closed session pursuant to code of Iowa, section twenty-one point five, one, I. To violate compressional competency of individual whose employment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered or necessary to prevent deals and reparable injury to that individual's reputation. And that individual requests a closed session. Would you like a closed session?
Yes, please.
All right. We're gonna go into closed session, um, we'll take a five-minute break and.